This meeting is being recorded by SMAC for future broadcasting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
If anyone's here for public comment, please sign in. It's over. Do you mind? Do you mind passing it to me? Sorry. The school committee desires citizens of the district to attend its meetings so that they may become better acquainted with the operations and the programs of the town's public schools. In addition, the committee would like the opportunity to hear citizens' comment. Public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between individuals and the school committee. It is an opportunity for a citizen to express an opinion on issues within the school committee's authority. Also, some comments will be addressed to the chairperson of the meeting. The school committee chair will favor those speakers who sign up in advance. We have one person sign up, Davina, Ms. Owens.
Thank you very much, Ms. Weiss. People of the school committee? I didn't have anything prepared. I wasn't prepared to speak tonight. We were hoping to hear a presentation on the change in the homeschool policy, and I understand that that's likely not going to happen tonight, but all of us here are intrigued by the idea of homeschooling or are currently homeschooling our children, and so this is near and dear to our hearts. And we've been through the process several times now with Stoughton. And what we've recognized is that the homeschool policy on paper is one thing, but it's being applied completely differently. And we feel that the disparate intentions behind both the policy and the application are something that really should be looked at. The law, according to the state of Massachusetts, is what is required to be complied with. It's not district. It's not town. It's state law that has to be complied, both statutorily and by case law. And there's significant case law interpreting those statutes. The district obviously has an interest in protecting our children and making sure that they're educated, as we do also as parents, and we respect that. And to the extent that the policy complies with state law, I don't think anyone has a real issue with the policy as it's written. However, we have taken issue significantly over the past couple of years with the direction that the administration is taking the application of the policy, the procedures that are being put into place for evaluation of parental education plans and then the annual reporting requirements. So what we would like to see, if the policy is going to change, and I think I'm speaking for everybody, is a little bit more transparency between the two, some consistency, as well as making sure that what is done in order to pursue the district's goals is done within the confines of the state law. And obviously, constitutionality is where the state comes in. So what we have defined for ourselves as unconstitutional overreach by the town in the past, we feel should be addressed by the school committee and just make sure that Stoughton is in compliance with state law with the way that the policy is being implemented. That's all I have. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Point of process, being new to the school committee member, when we have public comment, do people introduce themselves?
Yes.
And by their address? Can you state your name and your address, please?
Absolutely. My name is Davina Owens. I live at 374 Morton Street in Stoughton. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm into passing. All right. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is the superintendent update. Dr. Rob?
Thank you, Mrs. Weiss and members of the committee. I wanted to give the committee a brief update on some of the summer projects that we're working on. We have had special town meeting articles, annual town meeting articles, and the summertime is when a lot of these things kick off. And the two big ones are the DAW and Gibbons vestibule projects. You might remember at the special town meeting, we approved dual-entry vestibules for both of those schools. In the last week, we have demolished the ceiling in the lobbies of both schools to complete the brick for the transaction window. One of the new things we were putting in those schools is a transaction window similar to the high school. We've put in the header for the doors that are going to be installed, and we're starting to put in the ceiling, the new grids for the ceiling. So anybody walking by the DAW and the Gibbons right now is going to see a lot of construction work in the vestibule, and that's a direct result of our special town meeting. The project duration is about four weeks, so we're hoping to have that end by the end of July, beginning of August, and plenty of time for the beginning of the school year. One of the things that came up when we were cutting out the transaction windows, and I wanted to let everybody know this, is we found rebar going through the brick wall. So if you know the DAW and the Gibbons, when you walk in and you look to the left at the main office, there's a brick wall in both of those buildings. As we cut the transaction window out, we found rebar going through the brick. And it wasn't on the plans, but we found out from our architecture firm that, in fact, it's structural. It's holding the building up. So we can't remove it. So what we're going to do, in a wonderful educational move, is explain to the students what rebar does and put a little sign there. And explain how it's needed. It doesn't really obstruct the view. We can still put the window in. It'll be there. But we're going to make it decorative and we're going to help people understand. So we're not changing the project. We're not changing the scope of the project. It will move forward. We'll still have a transaction window. There's no other place to put it that would avoid the rebar. It literally runs from one side of the wall to the other. So if it comes up, that's what we're going to do to try to address the issue. But more important is the safety and security of the students and having the dual-entry vestibule. We're also working on the air conditioning project at the DAW, which is partially an article and partially SOR III funding. And again, we've started by putting concrete pads in for new compressors. We've started rooting interior lines and starting doing some of a lot of the back-of-the-house work over the summer and into the fall. Then you'll see more of the stuff actually coming in so that we can air condition that school. And the last thing that is not an article, but it's being paid for by the manufacturer, is the location of our scoreboard. We've been working with the manufacturer. The school district is looking at different places. Originally, there was a spot that the manufacturer wanted. We weren't terribly keen on it. We wanted to put it in a place that's a little more accessible, so we're working with them and hoping to having that project done by the end of August. So a lot of things are happening over the summer. If people visit the schools, the security cameras, intrusion alarms, door hardware, all of that is going out to bid in the next couple of weeks. So everything that we've been voting at the special town meetings and annual town meetings, you'll see happening over the next couple of weeks, and I just wanted the committee to be aware of that. And on a side note, just to let the committee and the entire Stoughton community know what a pleasure it's been to be your superintendent for the past year and a half. I've truly enjoyed it. I've enjoyed everybody that I've met and enjoyed all the opportunities that it's presented to me. And again, thank you and thank you for that opportunity. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments for the superintendent?
I have a question about the rebar. Does that require any changes to the design that are going to have implications for security? Or is it possible to just do everything around it?
It's exactly what we're going to do. So we can put the glass up in front of it and it'll be fine.
Okay, perfect. Okay, thank you.
Will the rebar be visible?
Yes. Yeah, unfortunately, we can't eliminate it or make it invisible. We're going to probably paint it the school colors. But, yeah, I know. I know. It was a huge surprise. We're going to minimize that. It's crossed. It's not this way. It's crossed. So it doesn't look like a prison. The rebar is crossed. So it's an unfortunate situation that was not in the plans, but when we dug into the brick, and we can't put it back. When they demolished the brick, they literally, it's gone. So we're working with the situation as we have it. But we're going, like I said, we're making it an educational opportunity. The architect will put a little sign there about what it does and why it's there. And we're actually, we're thinking about maybe painting it the school colors. There's lots of things we can do to make it a little more decorative, but it's an unfortunate consequence of the project. And again, because security of the students is most important, we're living with it. We want the security window. We still want to do all of that, so we want to make sure we have it.
Fabian. Chris?
I want to say thank you for everything that you've done for us as superintendent. I know it's been a lot of challenges, but I know there's been a lot of highlights as well. We're going to miss a very short, snappy graduation, so we're going to talk about it to those. Those are wonderful. So thank you very much, and we wish you all the best and to do it.
Thank you. All right. Onto new business. New year and financial report. I'm going to hand it back to Dr. Rob for that.
Sure. Thank you, Mrs. Weiss, members of the committee. In your packets, you have four documents, and this is an end-of-year financial report. The first document, and I'll walk you through them quickly, and then if there's any questions, we can certainly address them tonight. Or if you have any other questions, as you look through them, feel free to email me, and I'm happy to answer any questions. We try to predict what the end of the fiscal year is going to look like. So schools end our fiscal year on June 30th. This year, June is a three-payroll month, so we have a payroll actually this coming Thursday. So it made it a little more difficult to exactly predict where we're going to land on June 30th. This is a 99% effort, but the new assistant superintendent for finance and operations will likely come in and give you a final report sometime in September, once everything is closed and all the books are closed. But I did go through, over the last couple of days, I went through everything so that you could have a report right now. So at the end of this fiscal year, we've been moving toward a strategy all year of being able to prepay special education tuitions. One of the things we're allowed to do is use funds available at the end of a school year and prepay special education tuitions in the next school year. And so we've used about half a million dollars to do that, and that will allow us to handle an unforeseen special education situation next year if we have a student move in or we have something which is almost common. And so the funds will be available to handle those things. And then the rest of the money would be used for our payroll on Thursday. And then returning some of those funds to our SOR III to maximize SOR III funding, that's important because we want to make sure we have all the SOR III funding next year available to us so that at the end of the day, there would be zero turnbacks to the town. So right now, there's no expectation of a turnback to the town. We'll use the entire operating budget allocation. And any additional money, let's say, you know, next week when the books are closing, if there's any additional funding because we released a purchase order or something like that, it would go toward returning that money to SOR III and maximizing SOR III. So that's the strategy for the end of year, and you have the financial report there which shows you a snapshot on June 26th. And then the other two, three pages that you have are the grants, which basically are all the grants that we have through today or yesterday, and then the revolving accounts through today. And so you can see that our revolving accounts are what I'd expect them to be. There's funding available in transportation and facility rental, athletics, and we did that deliberately because we eliminated fees for transportation and athletics in FY '23 and moving forward, and we've embedded that into the budget. And so we will be spending down those revolving accounts for needs in those areas during the next couple of years. And then the final document that you have is our student activities accounts, and that's all the accounts primarily at the high school for different sports, for cheerleaders, for the class of '23, '24, '25, '26, all the different clubs and activities at the high school. They can raise money, and those are all managed by the high school principal. And then there's a few of them on the third page managed at the middle school. And so these are the balances on all of those accounts as of today. I don't anticipate too many changes. School is closed, so these are probably, you know, 630, the numbers are going to be pretty much the same. But as of today, these are the balances in the school accounts. And then the last document that you have, I just wanted the committee to have it, is a report that our outgoing business manager, Christine Suko, did as of April 30th. So she did the formal report as of April 30th. It's on the bottom of all of the financial stuff. What I did is I took from her report on April 30th, and I updated it in the next two months. And so the documents you have finish off the school year. So again, I'm happy to answer any questions, but that's where we're at, and I'm certain that the new assistant superintendent will give you a final update in September of kind of the final numbers when all the books are closed. They spend most of the summer closing the books. That's pretty typical. So there's no vote required necessarily. It's just more of an update in terms of what we're doing.
Does anybody have any questions on the financial report?
Two?
Yes.
Dr. Rob, I was wondering about the utilization of transportation. Since that has been made available, has there been an uptake in use of transportation? Is that being fully utilized? That's my first question.
So right now, we're collecting that information. So all the transportation is due on June 30th. We have 15 buses budgeted, but this money would be available in the event that we had a huge uptick, and we just don't know yet. The money would be available if we needed to add an additional bus or something like that. So that's what it's there for, and it needs to be used for transportation purposes. So that's really why we're holding on to it.
Okay. The other question is, have there been any realized savings, given the weather this year, the fact that we didn't run any extra school days, we didn't close for a day, there was no plowing or icing that really happened, except for maybe, what, two times, maybe?
Maybe one.
Maybe one?
Yeah.
Yes, that's one of the reasons why we have some additional funds, among others. But that's one of the reasons why we have those additional funds.
Is there any kind of fund that that circulates back into, because I didn't notice that, in the revolving funds so that we have that? Should we have a hard winter?
Right, right. We're not allowed to do that. So we're not allowed to take money from the operating budget and transfer it into a revolving account. What we can do, and what we have done, is keep the revolving accounts healthy.
Right.
So why not spending it is another way to get to the same result, if that makes any sense.
Yeah. All right. That's it. Thank you.
No worries.
Any other questions, comments? Fabian? Nothing? Okay. Pramondo?
Nothing.
Nothing? Okay. Well, thank you very much, and thanks to Ms. Sukawa for her work before she left us. All right. Moving on then, the next item would be the policy updates for home education, IHBG and IHVGR1. We are tabling that for later this summer. We have a meeting in July. We anticipate, we're looking forward to more information from Mr. Ford to present that. So thank you all for coming out. The next item after that is minutes, the acceptance of minutes from June 13th. Does anybody have any amendments or corrections for the minutes? No? All right. All right, then. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
All right. A second? All right. The motion has been moved and seconded. Vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. The motion carries 5-0, and thank you very much for that. Then the next item on the agenda is the elementary school building project update and responsibilities. Do you have anything, Dr. Rob? I know I have a few notes, but I'll hand it over to you.
I don't have anything to add to that particular line. I know you're going to be working with these.
Yes. All right. I wanted to go over a couple important deets for this project. I think it's important for the committee to know, but also for the community at large. The next building committee meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, July 12th. That would be here in the school committee conference room at the district offices. At that time, the committee is going to start to finalize the designs that they will be presenting to us later in July. So I hope to post that as a joint school committee meeting. If any of you would like to attend that and get more information on how the decision's being made, what the factors are. We just seem to be leaning towards a design at this time, so that's, project's becoming real. The next public forum for the whole community will be on Wednesday, July 19th, at 6:00 p.m. at the Stoughton High School. We are currently trying to pursue a virtual option. We know there were some issues last time with interruptions. We would likely have registration for that, so we're hoping to get the information out about that. We're looking into maybe having a babysitting option as well, but if the virtual option's there, hopefully, parents will have the opportunity to log in. We are looking into townwide mailers so that everyone in town would receive an information in their mailboxes announcing this meeting and a link to the school committee, or not the school committee, the building committee information page so that they will have this information, looking at getting the publicity out as we can through Facebook. I don't know, maybe throw out flyers at the July 4th parade, but we are trying to get the information out. But again, that will be Wednesday, July 19th at 6:00 p.m. at the Stoughton High School. We are voting on the enrollment and preferred design on July 26th here in the school committee conference room at the district offices. Dr. Beata will be there, hopefully back from Portugal. Unfortunately, we will be missing somebody to Portugal, but I hope everyone is able to attend that meeting. There'll be a very important vote on that. And then the MSBA submission will be the end of August. So that hopefully gives us a little bit of wiggle room in case they need to come back to us with any information. There are a couple of things I wanted to note from the last building committee meeting. I know, Lindsay, that you attended. One was the idea that was asked at town meeting when a select person said, "Why can't we just buy a design from another town and just use that?" And the question is, we can't because there's a number of legal issues. A school is designed for a specific town, a specific ed plan, and that plan belongs to the designers in that town. There is, however, a model school option where the MSBA selects certain schools that people can choose to use those plans. Only about four or five options fit our higher enrollment and no option fit our lower enrollment. There is no longer an incentive. At one point, there was an incentive to use that. You would got a 5% discount on architectural fees. That is no longer the case. Any model school at this point is five to 10 years old. Codes have changed, so we would have to spend significant architectural fees to change that, to bring it up to code. We would also have to redesign the plan slightly to fit our needs, to fit the programs that we want to see in there. Last time, we added the RISE program to the school. It's going to have the language-based program as well. That's not included in these model schools. So we examined the possibility. People ask. We have looked at it. It's just not possible. It's just not feasible. It's not going to work for us. Any cost savings that we would get by using this model school, it would be minimal, and we would end up with a school that might not fit the site well or something like that. Another thing that they did is the MSB asked for the project team to look at the Wilkins as having an expansion added onto that site. Now, Fabian, I know you're very familiar with the Wilkins, and can you imagine adding, making that a school for 515 students? Yes, they did a very creative solution. It was a three-story addition off to the side, and they took up part of the parking lot to expand the gym. Basically, that site just does not work, so an add-reno option with an expansion is just not an option for the Wilkins site. So we have explored that. It's not feasible. And the last thing is something that's come up, discussed around town, is that there's been sort of a request to leave a portion of the developable land on the parcel that we're looking at, that line lumber site, for future town development or use as an offer of goodwill, since so many people did want that site for the current fire station or something like that. So that is something that's in discussion. That would likely mean, we talked about making the multi-use fields a little smaller rather than having a large field complex behind the school. Perhaps we have one large multi-use field for sports use rather than having a baseball diamond and this and that and that. You know, maybe it's something as simple as leaving a space for DPW to park some extra vehicles for maintenance or something like that, since we will have, likely have a maintenance garage on site for the school property. But that is something that members of the committee asked us to consider doing. That said, any questions or comments for the building committee, since there's a working group meeting tomorrow, there's also that public meeting in July, but if there's any questions or comments or things that people would like to see answered?
Yeah, I would just like to say I really appreciate how thoroughly the building committee is examining all of these options. It really feels like we are taking everything, like every possible option, very seriously and considering it and making really informed comparisons. So just like want to extend appreciation through you to the rest of the committee for that.
I agree. I'm impressed with the amount of work, and I think that going through the process now and the amount of details and the amount of decision, I feel confident that when they present an option to us, it will have been thoroughly vetted.
Yeah, I'd like to echo that as well. It very much gives the impression of responsiveness, which I think is going to be really critical moving forward.
I agree.
I did have one question.
Sure.
I couldn't tell if that was a serious comment or a, maybe we could kind of comment, but possible flyers on the Fourth of July or for the parade. I'm very serious to advertise the public hearing at the Stoughton High School. Is that something that they have explored?
I don't know if we've explored it in all seriousness. We talked about maybe doing the fireworks, but there's really not a central location where we would have to go work the crowd.
Gotcha.
And I'm not sure that would be, but, you know, certainly I can reach out to the rec department and ask if it's acceptable for us to hand out flyers at the parade or if they have a little placard.
If they have a car and they're willing to put a sign on the side, but yeah.
We could hold a poster. I mean, so there's nothing that says we can't, so I can talk to them and ask if it's okay for us to hold something like that.
The more places we can advertise, the better.
Yes, exactly. I agree. Any other questions, comments?
I'd like to echo Chris. We need to advertise, and the last one was the best-attended event I've ever been to, and we need to find a solution to get everyone out to know what's going on in town and their inputs.
I agree. So hopefully, the mailer goes a long way towards reaching some of the demographics that we haven't been able to reach. We'll have the summer school program in session at that point, so if there's a way we can think of to reach out to the parents of that, and maybe that's where we go, the flyers. I have students at various programs, so I will try to corner some people and get some word going through the parents that I know to talk to others, and I encourage you to reach out to anybody you know and remind them about this. Any other questions or comments?
One other thing.
Sure.
My daughter was asking if she could help promote it as a teenager, so I didn't know if there was something that we could give to any teens who might be interested in getting the word out to their friends. You know, like maybe if there's a Facebook post, of course, old people use Facebook and not these teenagers.
Right, yeah, I know. We do TikTok dances.
Right, but if there's anything already made for social media content that we can give to them and they can help spread the word, I think that might be, once again, in the eyes of transparency.
Sure.
I didn't want to tell her, "No, whatever you do, don't tell people about this," you know?
I know there's a Q&amp;A form. It's sort of targeted at whatever questions come in, and some of them are probably not very applicable to teens, you know, like what is the tax estimate for this?
Right.
But, you know, I guess it's something we can look into. I'll bring that before the committee tomorrow.
Thank you.
Certainly, the CUDs are big allies for us, and, you know, the teens were fantastic in helping the high school, so.
Yeah.
All right. Moving on, other matters. We were all invited to walk in the Fourth of July Parade. Anybody walking with me? Hey, hey. Right. We'll all see what July 4th. Maybe we'll hold a little banner about the building committee, so I'll be shot about that. Any other matters? I know it's sort of the end of the year. I don't know if anybody has any comments from their committees.
I just want to extend my gratitude and appreciation to Dr. Rob. I know we sort of got at this during your update, but just like, I think over the last couple of years, you've helped us take on a lot of pretty significant projects, and just really grateful for the time and energy that you put in. And also, speaking personally, as like a very new person on the school committee, I just really have appreciated how you've explained things and kind of like broken things down, just wishing you all the best and just appreciate everything. So I'll leave that for, that's my other matters.
Yes, and thank you for answering all my questions. I have many. Thank you.
Yeah, we definitely appreciate your patience with this.
So I'll leave that for, that's my other matters.
Yes, and thank you for answering all my questions. I had many. Thank you.
Yeah, we definitely appreciate your patience with this.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, yeah.
You've come in with a lot of questions.
Having brought you on and now basically seeing you go, I hope you have, you know, the best of luck, and I appreciate all of the effort and staying calm through it all. Thank you.
Agreed.
All right. On that note, our next regular meeting, our regular meeting, we have one scheduled in September, but we have a meeting on July 26th at 7:00 PM here in the school committee room. The next elementary school building project committee meeting again is July 12th at 7:00 PM here in the district offices. And then the next elementary school building project community forum is that July 19th at 6:00 PM at the high school. Could I have a motion to adjourn? All right, a second? I think we, after, a roll call vote? Aye? Aye?
Aye.
All right, the motion is carried, five nothing. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming, and good night, and wishing everyone a happy and safe Fourth of July.
Fantastic.
And now, take a moment.